Okay, good evening and welcome to the Lake Mills Area School District May Board of Education Meeting. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. So could we have stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have, I'll call the meeting to order and could we have roll call, please?
John Belaney here.
Rachel Davies.
Here.
Robert Tangerio.
Here.
Donna Thomas.
Here.
Richard Mason.
Here. Verification of meeting notice?
It was, the agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader and posted at the Lake Mills Library, Lake Mills Post Office and the Bank of Lake Mills on April 28th. It's also on the district website.
Thank you. Agenda revisions at all? I don't think there are any. So approval?
Moved to approve the agenda as printed.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 All right. Community input? Do we have any out there?
I haven't had anyone register with me this evening.
Nobody wants to say anything, huh?
Nope.
All right. Administrator reports. Want to start with you?
Yes. Good evening. Tonight we welcome Cindy Sandberg. Cindy is our Jefferson County School to Career Coordinator and she will introduce her, our youth apprenticeship students for the year.
Good evening. Yes, I'd like to say, you know, thank you to the school board and to the district for all the support that you have given to the youth apprenticeship program. This is, of course, a team effort. We have the students, the parents, the employers and the instructors. And so, right now, I would like to, if there's any parents in the audience of our youth apprenticeship students, would they please stand up? Do we have any parents? Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Many of us know when it comes to starting a job or being on a job, it can be very stressful. And just the parents sometimes they say, you know, you can do it, just give it a little more time. So the parents are very integral in this. With the employers, I'd like them to, when we announce the students, if they would come up with a student. And before that, though, I'd like to recognize the instructors that are very integral in also taking, making this work. Alex Larson for agriculture, Sue Havillan for hospitality, Kevin O'Brien, manufacturing and auto, and Jennifer Iverson, finance, and finally Ben Keel, who is the coordinator this year. So, without more ado, I'd like to first say, have Seth Stark, who was part of our hospitality program, and he was at Culvers Lake Mills. And his mentor was Katie Grady. Thank you, Katie. And here is your, here is yours, or can I?
Thank you very much.
And now, we have the finance program. And we have three students at AKT Business Services, which are Vicki Ritchie, they are Levi Brill, Trevor Howells, and Shelby Riggelman. So if they would all please come forward and AKT, and I think KT would like to say a few comments.
Levi. Give me that back.
I would just like to mention that both Shelby and Trevor are at the Capitol Conference Honors Banquet this evening, so they weren't able to be with us.
Is this the mic? Oh. Let Andy, Andy and I both had to show up for Vicki because she's my wife. It took two of us men to replace her.
We have just had the most amazing experiences with these high school students, especially with Mrs. Iverson sending them to, just the top quality students, and really appreciate it. And we enjoy having them back, coming back even through college.
Oh, Andy, Andy took my line. One of the things we're very happy is that a lot of our, a lot of our youth apprentices who go on to college will major in accounting or business or a related field and come back to us during the summer. And right now, we're looking at one of our students who will be a senior possibly joining us full-time.
This is what the program's all about. Our next person is Abigail Johnson, who is at Chapter Two with Amanda Sanderfoot. So if they could come forward. And then we have Mackenzie Eschmeyer, who was at the Progressive Incorporated with Carolyn Eschmeyer. Is she here? Yep. Please come forward. And then finally, this evening, we have our student in agriculture, and that's Aurora Westenberg. She was at the Twin Valley Farms with Joseph Spoke. So we can have Aurora and Joe come forward. And Joe, I know has been, he has been an avid supporter of youth apprenticeship. I know his name, have registered his name several times. So thank you very much, Joe, for continuing to employ our students as well. We really appreciate it. So again, I cannot say enough that this program wouldn't be available. And the thing, the nice thing this year is, out of the eight schools that we had, we registered 124 youth apprenticeship students. That's pretty good for the size districts that we are. And with that, then, we were able to give back quite a sizable amount of money to the districts to continue to take and support the programs. So again, thank you to everybody and thank you to the students and the parents, and hopefully this will give you an idea of what career you may want and what you can pursue and your goals that you can have. So thank you very much. Good evening.
Our next report will be from Ben Dayton from the Recreation Department.
All right. First off, thank you for having me. It's been a couple of years since I've actually seen you all here in this setting, so I just wanted to give you guys an update on what's been going on with the Rec Department over the past few years. And I like to do this a little more regularly, just to kind of keep the board in the loop. All right. So it's been a pretty busy year, or a couple of years, I should say, for us. We've added many, many new programs. We've done a lot of work on the backend as well, just to kind of update things within our department. On here, I have a few different items. One, we added a online registration site, which has really helped free up our time to be able to not just file papers and do all the paperwork and kind of get rid of some of those oopses that happen, like, you know, with Excel sheets where things get moved a little bit. So that's been a huge update for us. We've moved to a three brochure cycle, which is kind of standard for park and rec world. And so those are our seasons that we put them out for. Additionally, we've kind of been on online presence as well on Facebook. And then here is a list of some of the several new programs that we've kind of introduced over the past couple of years. This last year, which I'm reporting on, we had roughly like 69 programs overall from all three seasons. So, what's next? We have been continually to try to update some of our equipment to kind of get things back up to speed, and also get rid of some of our older equipment. We've started to add some senior programmings. This year, we started, we added four senior trips based on some input that we have gotten. We are also working on a disc golf course, which should be up and running this year. So I know a lot of people in the community are excited for that. We started and we're going to continue to try these one-day events. Our last event was a nighttime egg hunt, which, much like the youth egg hunt, sorry, this is for high school and middle schoolers, but much like the youth egg hunt, this one lasted three minutes total. And it was at night with flashlights, so it was pretty cool to see. And then we're also going to be working on improving our staffing procedures, and then also kind of fill in some of those holes that we might have. It's kind of tight with one and a half department, so we're always trying to work on what we can do to utilize some part-time staff. So, here are our numbers. As you can see, we've kind of dipped into some new areas and expanded some others. We've always had the youth athletics, we've always had the adult athletics, but as you can see, the youth enrichment has really started to grow. Our trips have expanded. We've started to offer more open gym-style programs. And as you can see, the, the total participation, I'll call them units, because those aren't individual people every single time, that's, that could be the same person signing up for multiple different events. But, fun fact, I was looking at my previous report, and we've added almost a thousand per, or thousand participants in that 2015-16 year. So, quite a bit, we have a very active community. So here's our full list of events. As you can see, quite a bit. We've also taken on some others, like the ski and snowboard trip that the high school had been running, well, not the high school, a parent group had been running. So then, we have taken on things like that as well. So, these are some of our partners. We've continued to have like a collaborative, what am I trying to say? Approach with some of these events and activities. We help the high school out a lot with the high school teams, with their different camps, and then also the local service groups as well. So, that's all there is I have for you. I just appreciate all the time that you give, and I want to thank our sponsors. Obviously, we have a lot of community support. It's pretty amazing what we see. Our community overall, it's just been amazing. Very supportive community, so I'm lucky to be here. Any questions?
Ben, you've done an excellent job building up the program. There's only one way to go, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, there's all kinds of various things that you can be doing, but all anybody has to do is see what goes on, on a Saturday morning with soccer. I mean, it's, you can already find a parking spot.
Right.
And there, it's really neat to see parents and grandparents and all these kids run around in the, in the morning playing soccer. It's, it's really neat.
Yeah. Spring soccer has averaged like 188 kids over the past three years, so, pretty amazing. All right? Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ben. I need to talk with you just a little bit about our JEDI program. As you know, we're becoming the chartering district in July. And in order for the JEDI program to continue to grow, we have been asked to support a letter to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction that asks for a waiver around the open enrollment issues. And in order for the district to submit a waiver to Department of Public Education, I need to present it to you this evening, and then post that there can be community input for a month, and then I'll ask for action on this at the June meeting. You've heard some of the issues. We've talked about this. We've had Leslie Steinhaus here, I think twice, talking about our role as the chartering district. But essentially, what we're asking for from DPI is some relaxing or easing of some of the restraints around open enrollment, and most specifically, we're asking for a waiver of the January date for setting those grade limit, limit issues, grade level limits, that when we set those numbers, remember, once we set the numbers, that kicks in immediately for the open enrollment to happen. So there becomes a time between the January board meeting and the third Friday in September, when if there are any limits set, JEDI would not be able to take any enrollment students either. And so this is a relaxing of that rule. We are asking for a waiver so that Lake Mills could set separate waiting lists for the brick and mortar classes versus the JEDI. Right now, they're lumped together as a chartering district. We need to do that, and we're asking for a separation. And then a third waiver that we're asking for is that we can have a different standard for the number of seats that we're going to have between the two. Pretty complex. We've met with the DPI on this. The state statute, in my opinion, was not written to really look at a chartering school of this magnitude happening relative to the brick and mortar school. So, I have the complete packet here. I've given that to each of you. This will also be available in the district office, and then if any community members have any input on this, we will be asking for that before the next meeting. And then finally, in your packet tonight, at our last meeting, you had asked for the purpose of each of the depositories that you approved last month, and so Wendy has created that handout for you, and again, it's attached there, so you can see what we use each of those places for.
Okay. Mrs. Silverood?
Hi, I'm having computer issues.
Ben?
Really?
Ben, how's it going?
Should we go on to the next one? While you get it?
Why don't I get them started? So I'm going to be talking about, for example, I can either talk here and watch.
What? Okay. Why don't you start your presentation, and we'll get you some tech help there?
She knows that the projector is there.
I don't know. I don't see the projector as being on, do you?
You just have to pull the thing to get the projector on. Just. Okay. Always hope that there be light.
So, we are here tonight, sorry. You know, just a little bit of panic when you're like ready and you're not ready. So we're here tonight to talk about pupil services and math curriculum review. And...
Can you just go advance it for me?
The clicker didn't work for me.
Is it slide?
Yep. So just go to the next, like hit next. So, here's our cycle. During the 2015-16 school year, the groups started to get together to work on the professional development around curriculum developments, which focused primarily on understanding by design as a curriculum framework, and that was facilitated through me. And then we also looked at as much data as we could. So the data that you presented tonight is going to be presented from the 2015-16 school year. That's two years old. Just keep that in mind as you're going through the curriculum, as we're going through the curriculum cycle. Year two, the task at hand was to develop their scope and sequence, develop their curriculum map, and then review materials needed for presentation. Pretty, pretty basic, right? These people put in probably at least 50 hours' worth of work developing their scope and sequence and their curriculum maps, and then reviewing materials. So they've really dedicated some time to making sure that we have the right curriculum map throughout. So in this scope and sequence that after tonight will be posted to the website, we include the unit themes, the unit goals, enduring understandings, and essential questions. And again, that's the same thing for our typical thing. So first, I'm going to invite our pupil services team up. And a couple people couldn't be here tonight, but I'll start with the ones that are here. So we have Teresa Schrader, who is our elementary social worker. We have Ashley Stewart, who is our school counselor at the middle school. We have Kiston Gillespie, who is our school psychologist at the middle and high school. Diane Sweeney is here from, our counselor from the high school. Colleen Good is one of our special education teachers at the middle school. And Katie Burton is here as a special education teacher from the elementary school.
Good evening. So I'm here to start the conversation with a review of some of the data that we collected. So what we do every year is we use a survey called the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. We use that at the middle and the high school. And the elementary school uses data from PBIS, and soon the middle and high school will also be using data from those, from that source. So what I'm going to do is talk a little bit, just highlight some of the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats or challenges that we found in the data. Some of the strengths that we found is that we really felt that in all three buildings, students had a trusted adult, or multiple trusted adults that they have to go to. So that was one of the, a major strength that we saw. Another one is that we saw students getting really involved in extracurricular types of activities that leads to lots more resiliency in students. A weakness that we wanted to highlight would be that our bullying percentage was higher on school property than was found in other schools throughout the state. So that's one of the weaknesses that we saw. When we look at opportunities, one of the things that we talked about is that we have an advisory time or something at the middle school, which is being developed called the homeroom time, that we feel is going to be used as a very purposeful relationship-type building opportunity. Another thing that we're going to talk with our staff about is some internal conferencing or training and more in-depth information on mental health issues. And last but not least, we wanted to highlight some of the threats or challenges that we feel exist. You have a list of those, but, you know, we all know that with the increase of technology in our world and social media, comes lots of challenges with our youth. And based on those challenges, we see a rise in mental health issues. And so I think that that is just pervasive throughout our three buildings, and we found that that to be, you know, a real challenge that we will be working with in years to come.
And so just as a program overview, our overarching goal, what we want students to be able to do is to be able to effectively understand and apply healthy, social, emotional, behavioral, and academic skills in their lives. And the course offerings that we have is 4K through fifth grade, classroom guidance, and then Students Serve, that's for all of those students. So that's kind of our overarching goal for the program.
Good evening. All right. So here are the materials that we had reviewed as a team. Currently, the middle school is doing second step and life skills, and the elementary is doing the social thinking curriculum as well as second step. We just wanted to make sure that when we reviewed the material, that it was age-appropriate, research-based, and with our list, that's what we had found. Thanks.
And then our recommendations for purchase really kind of matched with the review of data that we did. And I just want to point out that the attainment alternative curriculum is something that is going to focus on the new transition program that will be coming. It's an alternative assessment for, geared towards those students.
And lastly, in the professional development area, we were hoping to get everybody going to the social thinking conference and training, basically so we're all speaking the same language and giving the, implementing it in the same way across all areas. Thanks.
So at this point, I'm going to pause, and we're going to say, any questions for the pupil services staff?
Lot of work.
Yes, it is.
Nice summary.
Thank you.
I have a question to you. I don't know if you were involved, but I think you know that at our last meeting in April, the Mrs. Strikes listed mental health as one of our number-one priorities.
Yes.
Do we have, it doesn't look like we have counselors in every building. Is that right?
Correct. We have a counselor at the middle school, counselor at the high school, and we have a social worker at the elementary school.
Okay. And the workload for, like at the high school counseling, related to academics, seems like it's gone up over the years, which, and we only have one counselor that just has to do it all.
Yes.
So if you, you gave a list there of things you need or you want to buy, but there was nothing listed there for personnel. I mean, if you had to pick stuff for personnel, more personnel, what, what might you pick?
I think the first thing is, quality-trained personnel is always first on my list. But if people don't have the tools and the resources needed to, to meet the needs of the students, that becomes a problem, too.
If we don't have classroom guy, do we have classroom guidance at the elementary school?
Yes. It's done in the classrooms by the class.
We don't have a guidance counselor there.
Nope. Because it's done by the teachers.
It's done by the teachers?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just add in that, because this is a curriculum review cycle, their purpose was really to look at the data and the curriculum, and then, taking that information, then as an administrative team, our recommendations for staffing come from this source, so.
Come from this source?
This source.
Oh, not from their source. Not from them. Okay.
I listened to them, and that is why our recommendations last, at our last meeting, were definitely in, that was included in the staffing proposal.
Well, pupil services is a people service.
Absolutely.
That's why I brought it up.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to introduce the members of the math committee. I'm going to go backwards. John Herman is not here. I believe his wife had a...
Baby.
Baby? Had the baby? Okay, Saturday, had the baby. So he's not allowed to be here. Andrew Carroll is here as one of our high school teachers. Beth Dunzine is also here as one of our high school teachers. Sam Fisher is probably out coaching somewhere tonight. Tracy Voit is not here due to family circumstances. Vanessa Toll, same thing. Jeff Hagstrom is here, representing middle school. Caleb Binner is homes ill. Katie Walsh is here from middle school. Kayla Thomas is here from the elementary school. Sarah Kerst, Leah Went, Brad Smith, Nick Hegeman, and Tracy Zietlow joined us. Did I miss anybody? Awesome. So that is our math team. It was a rather big team, and they were an awesome team to work with. Again, lots of hours spent writing their curriculum and lots of time talking about it. So I'm going to turn it over to them, and I'll run the...
Good. Could, could we have you just introduce yourselves, too, so some of us can put a name with a face?
Do that right now? Well, when you come up to the mic.
Yeah, when you come up.
I'm Beth Dunzine. I teach at the high school. We looked at in 2015 our strengths, and again, as Jamie said, this is what we saw at 2015. Obviously, data has changed since then, but our math mean scores overall were increasing at that time. We now have to, everyone has to take the ACT, but our, even with the entire district taking the ACT, our scores are either at or above the state level. Our AP program has grown and looks to, as we continue to advance kids, looks to grow even more in the very near future. And based on what we know of our students and the numbers that we saw, we felt that the numbers were a fair representation of what our students, you know, we'd look at the numbers and go, yeah, that number makes sense for that particular child or whatever. So we feel like we've got a good handle on where our students are and what they need as far as moving them forward.
I'm Sarah Kerst, and I teach fourth grade at the elementary school. So we looked at our weaknesses as well in 2015, and we found that our students that are performing poorly often lack number sense. They have a lot of problems with that, as well as their automaticity of math facts, so they don't know their math facts quickly. We noticed that the students that are struggling in reading are also struggling in math, because there's so much reading involved in mathematics now. And as a whole, our students are really wanting a quick solution to solving math problems, and they're not as, they're not as equipped to apply the standards of mathematical practice. So we work with that. Our response to intervention students haven't, we haven't seen an increase in the impact of growth in that. And we find that sometimes our assessments that are given to our students to measure their growth don't always align with what we're teaching. So, and that was a weakness. And one final point was, we'd like to increase our communication between our buildings with our students that are achieving in high levels.
I'm Nick Hegeman. I teach first grade at the elementary school. I'm going to talk about some of the opportunities. Like Sarah said, we want to increase the number sense at all levels. We want to have more of that rich conversation for kids to talk about how they solve their answers. We want to revamp and add more to our response to intervention programs. We want to have some...
We want to have some more discovery-based learning, where the kids discover how they use their math and make sure it always applies to the real world. And we want to make sure we create more cultural connections with all of our students.
Hi, I'm Kayla Thomas. I'm a special education teacher at the elementary school. To go along with what Nick and Sarah were talking about, we also discussed some threats for our curriculum. One of the big things that came up was switching from the typical mathematical thinking to kind of the new problem-solving way of working through math. This can be difficult for students who are transferring in, or for students when they're first starting off with our curriculum. And then we also just touched on the amount of time lessons can take. We like to keep mini lessons short, but at times, a threat could be that our lessons are taking too long and our students are sitting for too long. Thanks.
I'm Leah Went, I'm 3rd grade teacher. And just to talk a little bit about the program overview, our program serves all students 4K through 12. We have everything from K-8 general math all the way through AP Calc. And the overarching goal is just that students will be able to use mathematical skills by problem-solving, critiquing, analyzing, and reasoning the world around them for a variety of lifelong situations. Thanks.
Some of the programs we reviewed were Everyday Mathematics, the updated version, My Math, and Go Math. And at this time, we do not need to purchase anything. We're using the updated version of Everyday Math, but we are watching the data carefully, and if we do not see increased scores with the new version, we'll be ready to make a change. And we do have, we do not need any professional development at this time. Thank you.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the Everyday Math program. We switched to the version 4 fully last year. Two years ago, teachers started piloting it. We have seen the data, because we've been watching it, do a little bit of a dip, but that's pretty typical for an implementation dip to happen. What we want to see is that data to spike back up, and if it doesn't do that within the year or two, we are preparing to transition out of Everyday Math rather quickly and not wait for the next curriculum cycle to come around, because we don't want our kids to keep sliding the wrong direction with math. So I want to talk a little bit, grade 6 through 12 decided at this point they are ready for a change. And so we wanted to talk, take them through the process of how are we going to compare math programs? So the first thing I did was I asked them to create a list of criteria. What are you looking for in a math program? And this is the list of items that they came up with in the order of importance. So the first one was weighted the heaviest. They wanted inquiry-based problem-solving that uses the practice standards from the Common Core. And all the way down to RTI materials included, which was a very low criteria. So it weighted very low, and most of the materials that we looked at didn't even have the RTI materials. So you look at some of these, and you're like, of course, Jamie, you're going to have it Common Core-aligned. We've adopted the Common Core as a board, right? Well, yeah, some materials do it better than others. So we keep that as a criteria to look at how well does this product align to the Common Core versus this product that just stamped their book Common Core-aligned, because they know they have to in order to sell it. Does that make sense? So it's kind of an interesting process. So we then put numbers to all of these things in all the materials we reviewed, and my wonderful math people computed it for me, and we came up with some materials that we recommend based on our criteria.
Hello, I'm Jeff Hagstrom. I teach 6th grade math, and I'm representing the middle school in our decisions that we've made, based upon the list that Jamie was just talking about. We looked at, well, first, it was a little tricky for us, because our building is 5'8", but a lot of programs offer 6'8". The one that we did find that offered 5'8" was Go Math, but that almost seemed more like a glorified version of what we already had. So we were not too keen on that one. And then we also looked at Glencoe Math and My Math, which tied similarly together, but again, was more of what we currently have. And like Jamie said, we were ready for a change, based on, we needed more, we need more applications-based and problem-solving-based problems that dig deeper than what we currently have. So that led us to CPM. CPM is a very collaborative-based learning program, and here are the, here's how the numbers break down, based on the first year of implementation for us. We are keeping Alex. That was a big piece that we wanted to keep for that knowledge-based learning, but then getting to apply the knowledge in the collaborative learning setting with CPM was the ultimate goal. So in addition to this, we also will be getting some training this summer with the CPM program. Oh, yeah, there we go. And that comes with what was included in the program's pricing. Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Andrew Carroll at the high school.
We can move it up.
Can we go up a little bit?
Yeah.
So at the high school, we reviewed various materials. The bottom two, the Glencoe and the Larson Edwards, are materials that we were currently using. We also looked at CPM and Discovery Series, because they both fit those criteria that we looked at earlier. We actually decided at the high school level that our preference was for the Discover Series. We really liked the balance between the inquiry-based, problem-solving, learning strategies and the valuable resources for the repetition and assessment to help solidify those skills. We would like to implement new materials at the Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II levels at this time. What we would not like to do, and some of this is by choice, and some of this is just necessary, for instance, our dual-credit class with Madison College, they set their own curriculum and resources, so we're obviously not changing that. John Herman has made basically his own curriculum for college math over the years that he would like to keep. And then our bottom three, we've had a lot of success at the calculus level, and those two courses above it kind of feed those students up to that level, and so we feel like that's working successfully at this time. And so at this time, we would like to stick with those resources. In terms of professional development, we do not believe we need any formal professional training. However, we would love and appreciate time to work together to figure out how to best utilize our new resources and make sure we maintain that vertical alignment as we go up through our course progression. Thank you.
So, any questions for math?
I'll ask one. Everyday Math.
Yes.
Reform program. What's then going to happen in 5, 6, did you have up there? What's the program?
Say that again.
I said, elementary school, you're sticking with Everyday Math.
Yes.
That's a reform program.
Yep.
And I kind of missed what you were going to have in the, at 5 and 6.
6 is going to switch to CPM, because that's, that's where that starts. So 5 is going to stay with Everyday Math.
Okay. So you'll kind of have reform programs all the way through now, which should be articulated to the Common Core, right?
Yes.
Now, you said to, are you dropping your dual-credit with Madison College?
No. They're keeping the curriculum.
Okay, they're going to use their...
Yep. They have to use their textbooks, because that's just...
I thought you said they were going to drop it?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your time and effort. I know how much time that takes. So thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Thompson is up.
Good evening. Just a couple of updates. This month, we had our kindergarten-through-second-grade concert facilitated by Mr. Shanafelt, our music teacher. Of course, our gym was packed with community members and parents coming to support their students, so I wanted to thank Mr. Shanafelt for the time that he took to prepare our students for that event. Our school carnival was last week. We had high school volunteers from the Hispanic Advisory Club and the Octagon Club come to help us run all of the different stations for that event. It was very well attended, and the high school volunteers did such an incredible job helping our students at the elementary school. We have a few upcoming events. This Friday night, we have Lego Night presented by our PTO from 5:00 to 7:30. And then on Saturday, we have our garden, our spring garden cleanup out at our garden site to get prepared for the spring plantings. Our 3rd graders have already begun planting, and the seeds are growing in our hallways right now, and we're ready to move them outdoors. So we're looking for parents, families, community members to come out from 9:00 to 12:00 on Saturday. Our student handbook, we are going to do a little bit of a deeper dig into our student handbook this year to make sure that everything is thoroughly aligned in there, so I'm going to be bringing that to all of you in July for the review, and then approval in August, and that will still give us enough time to print for Ready, Set, Go conferences at the end of August. So just wanted to let you know that there's a little bit of a change. And our student enrollment numbers are included in your packet tonight. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Bauer.
Tonight, I want to dedicate my board report to the results of our curriculum processes this year, and kind of give you a sense of how we tied everything together. So PBIS began this year by prototyping some different behavioral expectations. We were working hard on the hallways to start. Next year, we will plan on full implementation. Mrs. Brown and I have several, have had several conversations with another person who works as an external PBIS coach about next steps and what's emerging from all of the PBIS work in all the different communities. Our leadership committee explored rubrics for 21st century learning skills. Next year, teachers will be incorporating these into their rubrics and into the SLO process, so they'll be expected to have those 21st century learning skills as part of their SLO. Our innovation committee explored the U-Lab process that I did the MIT course on to consider what we need next for our students in the educational system. We went to schools, we surveyed staff, we surveyed students, worked on some of the processes, all of which resulted in some great understanding of what needs to happen next. Now, all of those things sound like separate, different committees that were all working on different threads, but there's actually some commonality that came out of all of the different processes this year. The main one being the importance of community. And I don't know if you, I think math, the math curriculum piece was a real solid example of what that looks like. So over the past couple of years, we've been working a lot on self, teachers understanding self, students understanding self, students understanding who they are as learners, taking the lids off individual students so that they could accelerate their education as they need it. And what we're noticing, as in the math curriculum process, you notice, there's the missing piece of community. How do we solve problems together? How do we work together to come to a solution? How do we use one another to come to a greater understanding than we would by ourselves? So really, all of the different, so the leadership team and the innovation committee will be coming together at their last meeting to discuss where there's gaps in our current middle school community. I'm working this summer through workshops and other conversations for specific practices to create a generative community. And of course, PBIS, Common Language Expectation throughout the building naturally lends itself to community. So although this will also be a bit of a shift, our work this year strongly indicates that's, that this is what's needed next in our space. Just a couple of things, other notes. I want to thank you to the orchestra and choir directors, who gave a beautiful concert last week, and I think one of my favorite concerts ever is coming up Thursday. I love when you have all 5'12", all the band kids in the district together playing. That is pretty impressive, so I'm looking forward to this Thursday for that concert. And like Amanda, you had enrollment numbers in your packet for the middle school for next year, class sizes, I should say, and enrollment numbers. Any questions for me?
Questions? Thank you. Mrs. Strike again.
I'm going to be giving the high school report tonight for Shelby and for Mr. Vogel. They're both at the honors banquet, the Capital Conference Honors Banquet, and I'm very jealous. That's one of my favorite things of the year, and I miss being there this evening. So from the two of them, I have these notes. Over 20 students participated in the 8th Annual Jefferson County Connections Youth Leadership Conference in Watertown. It was a one-day conference where students focused on everyday leadership and how to influence others in a positive way. We've done some notification of this, but we're very excited to announce that Lake Mills High School received honorable mention at the WIA basketball tournament in Madison, and I would say that that actually goes to the whole community. I think that, we believe that we sold about 2,300 tickets for that Thursday game, and most of you were there. It was a wonderful, wonderful experience. And so from the press release, I'll just read that the WIA Rural Mutual Insurance Sportsmanship Award is presented to one school and community in each of the state team tournaments. The award winners are determined by the conduct and sportsmanship displayed by the athletes, coaches, cheer, and support groups, mascots, bands, and spectators. Additional characteristics or consideration is given for the effort of school administrators and chaperones to ensure support for their teams, and that they're positive and have the highest ideals for sportsmanship. You might recall from our reports, we took over 100 adults with us that day, so our kids were well-chaperoned. Schools receiving honorable mention are acknowledged with a certificate of recognition, and Mr. Vogel already has plans for displaying that at the entrance of the school. The selection process includes contributions and evaluations from officials, tournament management, police, security personnel, crowd control, ushers, WIA staff, area hotels and restaurants. Rural Mutual Insurance has been a sponsor of this award for 53 years, and their participation and partnership is essential to promoting sportsmanship and education-based athletics as a valued corporate partner with the WIA. So congratulations to everyone on that. Prom was on April 22nd, and it was held at the elementary school. I have heard nothing but wonderful comments, so congratulations to Mrs. Body and the junior advisors for organizing that. And Mr. Vogel added that a special thank you to Mrs. Thompson for agreeing to, agreeing to share in, being a gracious host for all the high school students. They actually had the court come down the stairs and had an entrance there. It was a great night. The Internet Club of Lake Mills is working on the food bank, the mill. You've heard about this several times. To date, the club, the club has raised over $1,000 in grants, and also, they've secured a refrigerator. It's a food pantry for students, by students. And there was a great fundraising event that they held last week with staff participating as the incentive. So please check out Facebook, there's lots of great video and lots of great stuff. And thank you to the high school staff for participating in that. It culminated with the epic battle of Mr. Vogel versus Mr. Hicklin, and one-on-one basketball. It was pretty exciting. And there are two new student organizations for next year, so that will take the total to 33 clubs available for students outside athletics. One of them is Model UN, and Ms. Brenda Morris has agreed to be the advisor for that club. And then TRIAM, which is the Music Honor Society, and Ms. Heimstreet has agreed to be the advisor for that. And that's to recognize outstanding music students and the importance of music education in, education in shaping leaders for tomorrow. For upcoming events, as Ms. Nicholson mentioned, it's mass band concerts on Thursday night, which is 5 through 12. There will be over 300 students in the culminating performance. On May 13th is the Show Choir Showcase, another great music event. It's in the auditorium at 7:00. And then we begin the awards portion of the year on May 21st. There'll be the Academic Awards and Scholarship Night at 6:30 in the auditorium. And then on May 24th is the Student Recognition Celebration, and those are all the other awards that are non-money-based. And graduation is June 4th, and then the underclassmen will be completing exams June 6th to 8th. Mr. Vogel does need to bring the student handbook to you this month, so that it can be approved next month. Before you leave tonight, I will give you copies of this year, so that you can see that it will all be the same, except for one line on page 10. And he'll be adding, any absence that is between 5 to 9 skinnies will be considered a full-day absence, and any absence that is between 3 and 4 skinnies will be considered a half-day absence. Although that might sound strange to you, students know exactly what that means. So make sure that I get you some handbooks before you leave tonight.
All right. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Under the action items. Approval of April 10th Regular Board of Education Meeting.
I move the board approve the minutes of the April 10th, 2017 Regular Board of Education Meeting.
Second. Moved and seconded and approved the minutes of the April 10th. We can do that in a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Abstentions? Nothing? It passes unanimously. Approval of April 24th Special Board of Education Meeting.
I move the board approve the minutes of the April 24th, 2017 Special Board of Education Meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the April 24th Special Board of Education Meeting. And again, let's do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Abstentions? All right, that passes unanimously. Approval of vouchers and invoices.
I move the board approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $1,407,674.44 for the month of April 2017.
Any questions? Comments?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of food service contract.
Based on our discussion during the finance committee, at that time, we reviewed both the bid for a food service contract as well as the interview information for looking for a local food service director. And it would be our recommendation that we move forward with hiring a local food service director.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the contract for Ms. Kathy Coiman as Food Service Director for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Mrs. Coiman. Any questions? Comments? We discuss that thoroughly before the meeting. Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of 2017-18 CISA II contract.
Each year at this time, we receive the contract from CISA, and again, these are services that we can't manage in-house. The full contract is there. Since I, we posted this, there's also been the addition of the portion of the contract that will be for the deaf and hard-of-hearing services, and so that is included at this time. The only addition may be based on IEPs if we need any services for students with visual impairments.
So one motion in two parts. Take a motion.
Oh.
I move the board approve the contract with CISA II for the 2017-18 school year in the amount of $37,734 and the addendum for deaf and hard-of-hearing services for an estimated $38,360.
Second.
Okay, can we go back to the first part? You had 37?
Thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four thousand.
Wow.
Eyes are going.
Don't get old. Thirty-four thousand, seven thirty-four.
Thank you for the correction. And seconded by?
Me. Second.
Mrs. Davies. All right. Any questions or comments on that? All right, roll call, please.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Madison Metropolitan School District Tuition Agreement.
As you've been hearing almost every month, we offer services for students between the ages of 18 and 21, students with disabilities. We have one student that's in that program or that age at this time, and to meet her needs, she is attending the Madison Metropolitan School District, so she can be involved in a program through the search program, and she's working at UW Hospital. This tuition agreement allows her to partake in this. This should have been done last summer, but the Madison School District had a difficult time coming up with the terms of that agreement, and so it's at your place at this time.
All right, motion, please.
I move the board approve the tuition agreement with the Madison Metropolitan School District for the 2016-17 school year.
Second.
Okay, so that's for the this year?
This is for this year. That will be over in about three weeks.
All right. Questions?
I think it was last fall, it was presented that you were developing a transition program, and we got a flyer of kind of an outline, a timeline. When do you think that that framework will be done and it'll be brought to the board?
That position has been posted. The program is becoming finalized just last month. Ms. Sevru talked to us about meeting with the ILEC board to how is the program there. So all of the steps, we're moving right along.
Okay, so this will get folded into that, right? Stuff like this?
Absolutely. She'll be aging out. She'll be 21, so she'll be ending that program.
But someone else could be going into this.
Absolutely.
For all we know.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of 2017-18 dues and fees.
The schedule for dues and fees for 2017-18 is included, and you'll see just a few adjustments. One of them will be the increase in prices in the food service program, and that is to bring the cost or the price of those meals in alignment with the federal guidelines. And then there is an increase of $10 in that fee. That's a new fee that's been proposed by the district technology team, and that is to address the growing maintenance fees for our devices. As you know, we have over 1,600 devices in our district, and attached, you have a pretty exhaustive explanation of all of the costs related to that and the warranties and the batteries and, so that would account for the increase from $40 to $50 for student fees.
I'll move the board approve the fee schedule for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
Second. It should also be noted that, and it didn't mention that, that the fees for the lunch fees, for the food fees, are only going up like 5 cents.
Right.
Five to 10 cents. So it's relatively minimal. Any other questions?
That technology fee is being bundled in the comprehensive fee?
Yes.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff contract.
We have another outstanding candidate to bring to you. It's, at this time, it is for the band position. That's high school band, but this position also supports the middle school with lessons and will also be doing fifth grade general music.
I move the board approve a professional contract for Mr. Dominic Gisia. Gisia? As the high school band director and middle school music support.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve a professional contract for Mr. Gisia. Any questions on that? Comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff resignation.
We received this letter from Ms. Julie Harrow. I want to thank you for the opportunity to grow professionally and personally as a special education teacher and individual. I have enjoyed my time working in the Lake Mills School District with students, staff, parents, and school personnel. I will truly miss working with all of the staff and collaborating with many different people from different buildings. This is an amazing district to work for. Please accept this letter as my formal resignation from the district at the end of the 2016-17 school year.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the resignation of Ms. Julie Harrow and thank her for her service to the students and families of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resignation of Ms. Harrow. Questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular resignation.
This letter is from Ms. Cory Tullz. This letter is to inform you of my resignation from the co-curricular position of Activity Board Chairperson. Just to be clear, that's part of the team that collects all the money, sells tickets at all the sporting events, does all the accounting around that. It's a really comprehensive job spanning several sport seasons. I've thoroughly enjoyed being part of the high school sports scene for all of these years. It's been especially heartwarming to reconnect with former students as young adults. The rapport that I have built with many of them at the elementary school rekindled when I saw them again during sports events. That was the best part of my evening, knowing what an impact I had made on those students when they were our tiniest of learners. They are always happy to see me and fill me in on their lives. It's been interesting to hear how they've been doing and what great kids we have in our district. I will miss that, but it's time to move on. Friday football nights, I will either be pitching a tent somewhere out with my friends or watching the sunset from our deck. It was great working with all of you at the high school. Thank you for the opportunity.
Right.
I move the board approve the resignation of Ms. Cory Tullz as co-chair of the Activity Board and thank her for countless hours of ticket sales through snow, rain, wind, and large crowds. Her cheerful disposition will definitely be missed. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resignation of Ms. Tullz. Questions? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular letters of appointment.
Both of these positions are related to tennis. First of all, at the middle school, just as we said, there is large numbers in track. There is also large numbers in tennis, and so we want to add Mr. Ricky Kappas to help us with the middle school and provide supervision there. And as Mr. Kappas has resigned from our high school team, we would like to add Ms. Dana Rosenwald as the assistant tennis coach at the high school for next fall.
I move the board approve the co-curricular letters of assignment to Mr. Ricky Kappas for middle school tennis coach and to Ms. Dana Rosenwald for high school assistant tennis coach.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve co-curricular letters of assignment. What a great problem to have, right? Increased numbers. Any other questions?
Is the middle school tennis co-curricular, or co-ed, I should say? Is it co-ed? Middle school tennis? Boys and girls together? No? Is this girls tennis, boys tennis?
I don't know.
Okay, the other question is?
I'll find that out.
Do they play, do they play tennis on the middle school courts?
Yes.
Okay.
May also come up here.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of 4K paraeducator reduction in hours for next school year.
Our 4K program meets four days per week, and one of our paraeducators had been offered a five-day contract. And so we would like to correct that for the 17-18 school year.
I move the board approve the reduction of hours for Ms. Nancy Kidder-Godkin from 18.75 hours per week to 15 hours per week to align with the 4K schedule.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the reduction of hours. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff resignations.
We have three this month. Two are immediate, and one is for next year. First of all, there's Mr. Corky Corbin, I think that all of us know, who are from this district, who was a bus driver for many, 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 many years here. Ms. Taylor Rainey was a special education paraeducator with us this year at the middle school. And then Ms. Kathleen Nitzel is a food service worker who would like to end her time with us at the end of this year.
Motion, please.
I move the board accept the immediate resignations of Mr. Leroy Corbin as longtime bus driver and Ms. Taylor Rainey as paraeducator, as well as the resignation of Ms. Karen Nitzel as food service staff member for the 2017-18 school year. We thank each of them for their time in the Lake Mills Area School District and wish them the best in their future endeavors.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of 17-18 professional staff contracts.
Attached with your packet this evening is the list of all teachers that we're recommending letters of assignment for for next year. We have made the corrections of the people who have resigned for next year, and the increase that we have included at this time is the increase in the ELL, or English Language Learner, position from .25 to .745. And then as the budget becomes more clear, we can talk about other staffing positions.
All right, a motion, please.
I move the board approve the professional staff contracts for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the contracts of the staff for next year. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of 17-18 non-professional staff letters of assignment.
Again, there's a list of our support staff, and we'd like to get out those letters of assignment. The only change is the reduction of hours for the para that we just talked about, and very happy to say that included in this list are our food service workers who will be retained as our employees with the return of the food service program to a local director.
Motion.
I move the board approve the non-professional staff letters of assignment for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the non-professional staff letters of assignment for next year. Any questions? Comments on those? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of 17-18 curricular letters of assignment, co-curricular letters of assignment.
So you have two lists before you. There's the co-curricular assignments that are related to athletics, and then also a list of the co-curricular assignments that are non-athletic.
I'll move the board approve the co-curricular letters of assignment for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve co-curricular letters of assignment. Questions on those or that? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of Model United Nations Student Activity Account.
As was mentioned in Mr. Vogel's report, the high school would like to begin a Model UN program, and as such, we need to approve their ability to create a student activity account so that they can have a treasury.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the student activity account for the new Lake Mills High School Model United Nations Club.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve an activity account for the new club. Questions? Roll call, please.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. And approval of Model United Nations trip.
So, they already want to begin. And they would like to attend an overnight trip in March 2018, and so this is asking your permission to begin work on that.
Motion, please.
I move the board, oh, good. I move the board approve the March 2018 overnight trip to UW Milwaukee for the Lake Mills High School Model United Nations Club. It's understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
Second, thank you. Moved and seconded to approve the trip for the new club. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts.
Again, this month, there are several gifts to be accepted.
All right, a motion, please.
I move the board accept the following gifts to the Lake Mills Area School District and thank all of the donors for their generous support of our students. Lake Mills Market for their donation of providing coach transportation for the varsity boys' basketball team to the state boys' basketball tournament in Madison. Terry and Pam Strike for their donation of a bass and amplifier to the high school music department. Margot Trentado for the donation of $100 to the Lake Mills FFA chapter, and two anonymous donations to the new food pantry.